Yeah, a good afternoon, everyone. If you, if we haven't had the opportunity to meet before, my name is Sean Aiken, and I'm the superintendent here in the Shaler Area School District. It's a little bit of a difficult time that we're in right now, and we recognize that we are, I would much rather be talking with you in person in an auditorium or something of that nature. So this is, is kind of a difficult presentation through a Zoom meeting. But we're going to go through probably about a 20 to 30 minute presentation today first, and then we're going to open up for questions and answers. Again, I'm going to do the best that we can to answer as many questions as we can today. More of the information today is on a general high level. And specific questions that you may have, we can talk a little bit about this right before we go into the Q and A. We'll also have an opportunity to address those with our building-specific meetings. Dr. O'Black, did you want to review the Q and A and just then we'll go forward?
Thank you, Mr. Aiken. Just as a reminder, a question and answer period will occur following the presentation. From the administration guidelines to ask those questions will be shared regarding the commenting procedures. And we would just ask that you please keep your microphone muted during the presentation and also during the question and answer session until you have been recognized to speak. Thank you.
So thanks for taking a few hours of your time with us today. And this has been a challenging period for us as a school district. And we continue to work through, you know, discuss through work as a team to really try to decide what the right thing and the best thing is to do for our students in the Shaler Area School District. We've created this statement, and I'm not going to read to you slides, but I'll just provide kind of an overview about what each slide says. Dr. O'Black will also share a few of the slides as well. But this first slide, we think, is very important. And if you were on the call on Wednesday night, we reviewed this at that time, and it's a reopening commitment. We're committed to keeping our students and staff safe. We're committed to the health, safety, and well-being of all 4,200 students. We are committed to ensuring that this coronavirus will not spread throughout our school district and community. We'll do everything that we can possibly can do to keep our students and staff safe at this time. So one of the slides that we've used frequently through the process of working through the task force groups this summer and different presentations this year is really around the guiding principles that helped, helped us through shaping our decisions, thinking about safety. As I just mentioned, we have, we have to think about, for me as a parent, I think about my own children and my personal needs. For me as a superintendent and for us as a school district, we have to think about the health and safety of the 4,200 students in our school district. And so our decision-making is really based on these four principles. The second principle is the flexibility. We're going to start out this school year in a, in a virtual model, virtual scenario. But it's important to note that that's maybe the least, or excuse me, the most restrictive environment. But hopefully, we can transition into the least restrictive, which would be the traditional model. And so we've really identified, how can we be flexible through this process? What happens if we do come back in a hybrid model and then we need to transition back to a virtual model? So we've got to be flexible. At the same time, we need to be consistent, recognizing that our students need us to connect with them. Our parents need to partner with us. Our students have needs, emotional needs, academic needs, mental health challenges. And so how can we meet the needs? How can we provide consistency and structure and support for our students even in a virtual environment? And this was another guideline that we worked through this summer. And the final piece was is community involvement and community input. From a very, from the very early stages of this process, we've tried to communicate frequently. We've tried to involve the community. The task force groups had over 70 different people on those committees, and they ranged from parents to teachers to staff members, to community members, to health professionals, to operational professionals, transportation providers. We have tried to look beyond the boundaries of the Shaler Area School District and look across the region and try to pull people in who are experts in the field so that we can make the best decisions for the Shaler Area School District. So when we looked at the, the least restrictive to the most restrictive environments, we thought about the models, traditional model, hybrid model, virtual learning model. You'll hear a lot about these different models, and what do they mean? We want parents to understand what we, we're talking about when we think about a hybrid model or a traditional model. The traditional model that we looked at and what I stated back to our steering committee and also our task force groups in mid-June was that our goal from the very beginning was to start the school year in a traditional model. We recognized that, that our teachers, our students, every one of us, we do better in the normal traditional environment. Also, we had to consider like, what would the health requirements be? How do we keep students safe in this environment? But when we started the process, our goal was to get to this traditional model. Again, our goal right now, even though we're starting this school year in a virtual model, our goal is to move towards this traditional model in the least restrictive environment. So anyway, I just wanted to clarify the traditional, the hybrid, and the virtual to start out and explain, you know, some of that terminology that we use and throw around. So some very important updates. Some of you may have been on the call Wednesday night, Thursday night. Wednesday night was our education committee meeting. We had a lot of parents on the call that night, a lot of questions about what we're doing and why we're doing it. Thursday night, our board approved us to move forward in this virtual model at the beginning of the school year. And our model at this time, this virtual model, will be occurring for the first month of the school year and will conclude on Friday, October 9. Our goal at this time is to move from the virtual model to a hybrid model at that time. We will be providing updates on a weekly basis to give parents an idea of where we're at as a school district. Again, you know, this virtual model was a very tough decision. Just less than a month ago, we released information to the community about a hybrid model, and a lot of parents were confused, how did we go from hybrid to virtual? I think it was important to note that, that we just were not confident in the start of the school year in the hybrid model that we could keep our students and our staff safe. We did decide at that time, last Wednesday and Thursday, to push the start date of the school back to September 8. I think it's important to note that this will give our teachers time for professional development and preparation for the coming school year and the virtual model at the beginning. I will also give our parents a little bit of time to actually make the arrangements they need with childcare and daycare and other transitions that are necessary. I think it, it was important for us to just create a little bit of space. There's going to be some orientations and other things that we'll share in this, in these slides today that will give us some time to get parents in, get students in, to meet their teachers. A lot of questions around Titan Cyber Academy. Again, Titan Cyber Academy will be delayed until October 9, where parents will have a choice. There's flexibility around this choice. Parents may decide now because the commitment, as you see at the bottom here, is August 13th, which is Thursday. But we recognize that parents may change their mind in September and say, I'm going to send my child back in the hybrid model in October, or I'm going to keep my child at home when the hybrid transitions, and I'm going to keep my child in the virtual learning. So there is some flexibility with that. We want the, the transitions to be as seamless as possible. We also, a pretty big announcement is that we are going to be, going to be moving to a one-to-one environment for technology across the board, K to 12. Many of you may know that our technology to this point was grade seven through 12 in a one-to-one initiative. And then through this process of the spring and just thinking about this over the course of the summer, we want our students to be equipped and prepared for whatever environment we're in. And we think having them have their own iPad at home will be a benefit to our students and families so that they can engage in, in learning at home on their device. We recognize too with the iPad, some of the questions that we received in the, the first meeting today with the primary parents is that you don't expect six to seven hours of, of work on a device during the day. We want it to be mixed and matched with some hands-on, project-based learning, research, different things like that, along with some screen time. We recognize that it's not healthy for our students to be on computers for six to seven hours per day. So the main question that we've been asked is why the virtual model to start the year? And as I mentioned previously, it really comes down to the health, safety, and wellness of our 4,200 students and our close to 500 staff members. We recognize that there is new information that we're receiving from CDC and the Pennsylvania Department of Health and the Pennsylvania Department of Education and the Allegheny County Health Department. We're working with all of those agencies to try to get the best information that we can possibly make for the Shaler Area School District. Again, some of the quarantining and isolation and the contact tracing is very significant. And we felt because of some of those concerns within that expectation that the best environment and the safest environment for our students was to start in that virtual scenario. Again, this allows us some consistency at the beginning of the year. We can build upon what we did in the spring, and we can focus on high-quality, robust, rigorous instruction through the virtual learning platform. And we're going to have some slides that actually speak to that and what that looks like. So one of the other questions that we receive often is what, what is going to be different about the spring 2020 remote learning versus the fall 2020 virtual learning? And obviously, the tech piece that I just mentioned is, is something that's big. But back in March, we were thrust into this, this model, and we didn't really have much time to prepare for it. And our teachers did a great job in the best that they could possibly do, given the circumstances. In the fall of 2020, we will have several months to have grown and learned from that situation, refine and enhance the learning opportunities based on the best practices in a remote or virtual environment. Back in, in March, April, and May, there was more of a focus on asynchronous and work that was being sent to students, whether it was through Google Classroom or other platforms. Now we're looking at both enhanced asynchronous and synchronous learning opportunities for our students, and we're looking at ways that we can connect and engage our students differently. There was an unstructured nature to the schedule in March, April, and May. We're looking to bring some structure to that schedule. We recognize that this may be beneficial for a lot of families, but this may not be beneficial for some. So we've got to be flexible. Our synchronous instruction, live in-person teaching on remote platforms will be recorded so that if there are students that can engage in it during the day, they would have access to those lessons at night or in the evening when families are able to get to that. Again, we modified the grading policy back in March and April and really focused on, you know, meeting the, the most basic needs of technology and providing food and instruction. But now we're looking to do school in more of a traditional format. We're going to have grades, we're going to have tests, assignments. There's going to be an expectation, accountability. There is going to be assessment of student progress, whether it's formative assessment, responses from, from teachers, consultation opportunities to get together with teachers online and ask questions, to check for understanding. And as mentioned previously, that one-to-one learning environment will be a little bit different than it was back in the spring. And a consistent Google Classroom learning management system platform will be very helpful across the board as well. Dr. O'Black is going to explain, we throw out terms synchronous and asynchronous, and we feel like it may be very helpful for parents to understand exactly what we're talking about in this environment.
Thank you, Mr. Aiken. And, you know, again, you know, we often use these terms, use them interchangeably. We just wanted to draw, draw out to all of you the differences between synchronous and asynchronous learning. And, you know, to be very, you know, very clear, we find value in, in both models. You know, there should be no online class that is totally synchronous or, you know, no online class that should be totally asynchronous. But in the synchronous environment, you know, quite typically, students learn at the same. So this is a scheduled session throughout the day where communication were to happen in real time. And because it's real time, there's possibilities for more engagement, engaging and effective instruction, and allows for that instant feedback and clarifications on any misconceptions that students may have. We certainly understand the, the challenges in our families' homes regarding synchronous instruction. So one of the things that we are going to be asking our staff to do when they engage in synchronous instruction is to record that so that students who are not able to be in front of the computer at a specific time or would benefit from hearing the session over again, would have the ability to go back in and re-listen or re-watch that synchronous learning session. Asynchronous learning, much of what we experienced in the spring during our, our school closure, this was communication that was not live. Students are able to learn at very different times. It is more convenient and flexible for some families and allows students to work at their own pace. And some of the examples that we saw this in was email, screen class, wood grids, video or, or blogs or comments from teachers or students. So, you know, we are looking to balance the synchronous and asynchronous in age-appropriate ways across our district. Obviously, our expectations, you know, for kindergarten students would be different than our expectations for students at the high school, secondary level. So, you know, we are relying on our teachers to, you know, really find that balance in their specific grade level, but also knowing how important it is that our teachers are in front of our students in some line capacity at some point in time throughout the week.
So some of the things that we've been working through around our commitment to our students, you know, just because we're in a virtual environment, we don't want there to be this disconnect between our staff and our students. So again, these are some things that we're working through. These are not etched in stone, but, but we are committed to providing these. And how we will provide them, we're still working through. Again, our mission is a collaborative, innovative, and creative learning environment for all. That doesn't change in a virtual environment. There has to be a focus on social and emotional well-being. We recognize that our students at this point have been out of school for five months. In another month, when we start school back, that will be six months. Hopefully, as we transition into a hybrid model, that will be seven months. That is significant. We recognize that, that we're going to do everything we can to meet the, the needs of our students. We recognize the challenges with, with mental health, anxiety, depression, just isolation. Those are, are all factors that, that we are taking into consideration and thinking about how our teachers, our principals, our counselors, our social workers, and all of us can band together to still connect with our students even in a remote platform. Again, one of the, the commitments that we have is just really thinking about our curriculum and how we're, we're teaching and, and a robust academic environment for our students. Rigor, meeting the needs, also recognizing the, the balance with, with teachers and students, you know, being apart. You know, some students may not be able to, to join some of the learning until the evening. So we, we've got to be flexible, we've got to be nimble, and we've got to be transitioning as we transition our students from the virtual learning to hybrid learning to traditional learning. We've got to have seamless transitions across the board, and we're working to do that. The, we have a slide later on to talk a little bit more in depth about IEPs and 504s and GIEPs and gifted students. We, our intent is to meet the needs of all of our students. Sure, the accommodations and modifications and interactions with staff may look a little bit different, but we've got to figure out a way to, to bridge these gaps and meet the needs of our students. Our school counselors are still extremely important in this role in the virtual environment, and they will have interactions, consultations, lessons, and supports for our students in this environment. Another feature that we're committed to is just high levels of engagement. We, we recognize that our students need to be engaged in learning. Learning is not meant to be independent in nature, it's meant to be engaging. We understand that students learn from each other. We understand that students learn collaboratively. So that, those connections are important. So we expect that there's going to be classroom environments and student engagement through this process. We continue to talk about best practices, and our teachers were able to learn a lot through the spring and grow throughout the course of the summer and get some professional development during this month. And so our expectation is they're going to continue to learn and grow as teachers and provide best practices for our students. We recognize that these transitions are, are difficult, and we're going to be as, as flexible as possible with our families as we navigate between virtual, hybrid, and traditional settings. So at the primary and elementary school level, one thing that we've been challenging our principals to do is think about, what does virtual learning look like for a student? What does it look like for a family? How do our students engage in learning, meaningful learning in this virtual environment? And, and how, how can it be replicated or simulated to what we do or similar to what we do in a school setting, if at all? So one of the things we've talked about is just the consistency piece and the accountability piece and having a sense of normalcy around some of the timing that it's offered. And that would go back to what Dr. O'Black explained in the synchronous model, but just having some real-time learning between eight o'clock and three o'clock for our elementary school students. This setting will include some live lessons, some group projects, different things like that that will allow our students to engage in some sense of normalcy. I know in the spring, there was a lot more flexibility, and we're still going to be flexible with families that can adhere to this around, you know, some of the recordings and different things like that that we'll do. But again, we expect classroom environments where teachers are engaging with students, asking questions, building relationships, checking for understanding. Again, we think that these things are all extremely important, and we recognize that, that having us, the Google Classroom platform will be extremely helpful across the board, K to 12. So one of the questions that we receive often is, is what happens following the district-wide 100% virtual learning? And Dr. O'Black is going to, oh, actually, I'll talk a little bit about the hybrid school return, and then he'll follow this up with Titan Cyber Academy. So we're asked this question often, what does, what is hybrid school? What, how do, how does my student interact with learning? And we know it's a combination of in-person and also virtual learning. Students would be assigned a couple days a week. They may be in the Monday, Tuesday cohort, they may be in the Thursday, Friday cohort. But students would be responsible for coming into school two days of the week. Our teachers would engage with those students at that time. We're still working on some of the, the details of this model. It's extremely complex and challenging. But here's just kind of an overview of what this would look like. Teachers could interact with students in person Monday and Tuesday, another group of students on Thursday and Friday. And then there would be a cohort group that would include the Titan Cyber Academy, and those students would be fully virtual Monday through Friday. Again, this, this model provides some benefits, in-person instruction, connections with students in person, building the relationship and rapport with the, the staff members. We think all those things are important. Some of the challenges with this still are around social distancing and school buses and hallways and cafeterias, even the classrooms. We recognize that this is such a new normal for our students to be in this type of environment. But as we transition to this hybrid model, we are going to be prepared for what this is going to look like and allow for seamless transitions for our students to go, to come back from, from virtual learning into this model. Another question that we get often, and we're still working through the details, what does remote learning look like during the hybrid model? If students are in school on, on two days, what does it look like the other three days? We're still working on some of the details, but we expect that there would be projects, there would be research, there would be specific activities that would be engaging in meaningful and relevant learning. There may be a consult period with one of their teachers where they could actually talk about their learning and ask questions and engage with teachers in discussion. But we, we are expecting that, that the instruction would be both synchronous and asynchronous using platforms such as Google Meet, Google Classroom, and we expect there to be a high level of engagement for our students. So as I mentioned previously, Dr. O'Black is going to talk a little bit about Titan Cyber Academy today and give an overview of what it is, and so that parents have the information they need to make decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Aiken. So Titan Cyber Academy is our 100% virtual schooling during hybrid and traditional return. So similar to the first four weeks of school, students would have the opportunity to engage in synchronous and asynchronous learning via Google Classroom five days a week. You know, the, the, the value to the Titan Cyber Academy versus other cyber schools or cyber charter schools is that they would have consistent Shaler Area curriculum taught by our teachers. And that consistency will allow students to move between virtual, hybrid, and traditional seamlessly. We do believe that there may be instances where a student has to go from hybrid into full virtual or that they may have the, or they have the desire to go from full virtual into hybrid. So, you know, what we're doing is we're working to develop plans a week and best that can happen so that we're able to keep consistency for the students and our staff. Additionally, we would offer the similar support services for IUP 504 and gifted students. Students in the Titan Cyber Academy would have access to a school counselor for consultations, lessons, or support. And then additionally, you know, high levels of engagement with our staff and administration to connect with our students, because we do understand the importance of those relationships and not having these students in front of us for at least two days a week under the hybrid model only makes it more important that we continue to stay in touch with them and make sure that their learning is progressing. Oftentimes, some of the questions that we get is, you know, what makes the Titan Cyber Academy different from some of the other options that may be available to families? And first and foremost is that you're able to continue to have that relationship with our staff and our curriculum, but you also are eligible to participate in Shaler Area Clubs and Activities. And if your child is, you know, graduates from Shaler High School through the academy, they receive a high school Shaler Area diploma. Our district intends to offer a full complement of courses, to the extent feasible. That is one of the reasons why we are asking parents and guardians to complete the commitment format by Thursday. We really want to get a better gauge on how many parents may be opting for their child. For their child to have a one hundred percent virtual program through the remainder of the semester. If, you know, on a specific case, we are not able to off a operate course. In the Titan Cyber Academy, we do have existing partnerships that can provide a wide range of courses. On an as needed basis. Additionally, the asynchronous component for Titan Cyber. Will occur during identified periods or Wednesdays, this is an area that we're still. Working out and and part of that will depend on the number of students that we have in the program. And we're trying trying to strike a balance is we will have teachers working in hybrid models and working in. You know, our Titan Cyber Academy, so you know, the live instruction that that our teachers and our students will be engaging in. That may vary based on the specific course or based on the specific schedule of the teacher. All of the textbooks, technology and other necessary materials will be provided by the district. And any parent seeking any additional information regarding this option. Can contact their school principal and then they will work collaboratively with us to get us any questions and answers that you.
So I I touched base on this a little bit earlier on one of the earlier slides. But this is a significant concern and we built these slides around a lot of the questions and concerns that we've been. Asked in in the past few months. This special education pieces is extremely important for us. We have to think about how do we meet the needs of all of our students? You know, we have four thousand two hundred students in our school district, but we have. A number of students with I E Ps, a number of students with. Five oh four service plan agreements, we have a number of students with G I E Ps and. Some of these individual needs, we have to think about. What types of accommodations and modifications can we use in a virtual platform? So again, you know, we have. You know, our our teachers and our paraprofessionals are going to be working closely together. To, you know, comply with the the I E P and make sure that we're meeting the. The expectations that that our students have as far as their needs, their specific learning needs. We recognize also the social and emotional needs that are out there. And as I mentioned previously, we're going to be having our counselors, our teachers, our social workers working together. To meet these needs. There's specific related services like OT, PT and speech and and things of that nature, and it's important to note. That we will be working with the AIU and and other contracted services to make sure that these services are met as well. And some of these services we provide internally as well with our speech and language teachers and people within the district. Once again, this process has to be collaborative, we need our our. Regular education teachers working together with our special education teachers, working together with our counselors and social workers and our principals. And everybody on the same page. We recognize that these accommodations and modifications look may look different in a. Virtual environment, but we're going to do everything we possibly can do to bridge those gaps and ensure that this is not. Lost time during this this first transition point of the school year into a virtual setting. As mentioned previously, we have students with five oh four plans. And we will continue to to look at those service plan agreements and meet the needs of our students that are outlined in those service plan agreements. Again, there may be questions or concerns. Dr. Grasic, our Director of Pupil Services is an outstanding resource, also our building principals. Your special education teachers, all of those team members can answer questions that you may have regarding. Special education services. So a a number of questions have surfaced around this whole idea of reopening. And what is this going to look like and? You know, think about our students transitioning from third grade to fourth grade or fourth grade to fifth grade or even even earlier than that. And so we've been thinking about how can we start school in a virtual environment and miss out on those. The the meetings that need to occur between the students and the teachers, and so we are planning orientation activities. Where our students will have the opportunity to meet their teacher, pick up materials, whether it's an iPad, textbook. Materials, workbooks, different resources that they need. We've talked a lot about tech training so that students and parents feel comfortable. With the Google Classroom platform and understand how to navigate some of these tech resources that are out there. Food service is another question that that comes up from time to time. Our plan, just like the spring, is to continue to provide breakfast and lunch for our families. That need breakfast and lunch, we're still working out the detail. The details as to exactly where that will happen and that that information will be on our website. There also is going to be specific questions that parents have around the plan for virtual learning. We are going to be hosting specific building level meetings, so the elementary school will host a meeting. To answer questions and give information to families around the specifics of the virtual learning plan. Again, your principals are excellent resources. Your counselors are excellent resources for information. Dr. O Black and I are available, as I mentioned previously, Dr. Grasic as well, our Director of Pupil Services. But we are here to try to meet the needs, answer the questions that you have. We've updated the frequently asked questions document on our website and will continue to do so as questions roll in. But we try to also be responsive through email and phone conversations as well. We recognize that this is a difficult time for many people. And and trying to work through this with our families, partnering together, connecting with our students and making sure that we're meeting their needs. Dr. O Black, did you want to re-explain kind of the procedures for the Q and A?
Thank you, Mr. Eakin. We are going to open the Zoom meeting up to questions and answers, we would ask that you please raise your hand in the participant window. To the right of your screen, when recognized, please unmute yourself and state your name. Individual questions that are personal in nature should be directed to your building principal or the appropriate department. We are asking that you please keep your questions and comments to three minutes per person and we will have a timer on the screen here momentarily. Our first question today is the screen name Lena the Great.
Good afternoon, my name is Lena, my daughter is going into sixth grade. And my question would be, she does have an I E P. And my question is, when will her learning support teacher? Like get in touch with me so that I can really talk to that teacher about what her goals are, should be for the year and what. We can do at home. Also, will there be support for the parents? That are really trying to learn this Google Classroom themselves and how we can help our child the best we can. I see that you put on there, it says grades four through six are going like eight fifteen to three oh eight. I do work, technically, I work my hours around, you know, the regular school day, which would be. Seven thirty to three thirty, now if I'm able to try and get her on. I know she needs to be on, but we also need to eat and I need to work. So is it still okay if I try and email the teacher or her learning support teacher? During those office hours and then later on try and see if I can help my child? I don't know, I I guess that's all I have to say and I want there to be time for you to answer that.
Thanks Lena, I would, I would imagine that in the coming weeks. You'll be hearing from your your case manager for your your child. And again, that, you know, that communication, you know, would be more. Specific, so you can certainly email your counselor, your school counselor, your principal too, and they can set that discussion up. Our teachers are in some trainings over the next few days and then they're going to be coming back to work later this month. And so it's important that you get in touch with with your. Your your teacher, we understand the importance of that, but also I wanted to state that. There is some flexibility around work schedules and and different things like that, we recognize that some parents. May have to jump on in the afternoon with their child. And and we ask that you use that consultation time with the teacher to ask questions and then. Maybe get clarification and our teachers are really good about responding and and trying to be helpful. With our students and I'm sure they'll get back in touch with you to communicate, you know, how you can do that. There is going to be some tech training that we have, hopefully later this month, early September. With our our parents and students to help them navigate Google Classroom. We recognize that that is a significant challenge in understanding how, you know, information is shared and and. How we share assignments with our staff, I think is is important. And so, yes, we'll be working through all those details with our our parents. And then we can a- answer questions too as we go through the process, if there is a question with. Google Classroom or some other resource that a teacher is using.
Okay, thank you so much for your for answering my questions and I can't wait to get back into school.
Thank you, our next question is from Nate Fine.
Hello, um, I've been in and out of the primary and this meetings because. I have work to do, but. There were a couple of questions coming in and out that I still have. First of all. The survey, I heard you. Told of a parent in the primary school that those are being discarded because you claim this is a different. Environment today than it was a couple of weeks ago. Are you gonna send out another survey to hear what the parents really want? Another thing is. Is there, I've seen a lot of facts saying that. That going virtual is quite harmful compared to the other options. Do you have, you know, sites where you're taking your facts from?
Nate, all all good questions and and just to clarify something, when we did the the parent survey back in mid-June. And we had even waited, I know a number of other districts were doing parent surveys at the end of May and early June, and we waited till mid-June. To do that survey. We recognize that, you know, majority, I would say probably, you know, somewhere between seventy-five to eighty percent of parents expressed at that time that they wanted. Five-day traditional schooling. But then in mid-July, we saw, you know, really early to mid-July, we saw. An incredible spike in Allegheny County. And so, yes, you know, that survey information from mid-June, we think would be. A little bit different right now, now we still understand there's still probably a majority of parents that still want five-day. Traditional learning, traditional schooling, and we recognize the importance of that. But we can't make this decision solely based on. The majority rules, decision-making process, we have to think about the forty-two hundred students in our school district. And how we do that safely, so yes, we're working closely with the county, we're working closely with the state. We're working closely with other northern area school districts, and I realize in Allegheny County. School districts are all over the place, you have school districts that have. Proposed a hybrid start, you have school district like us that have proposed a virtual start. And you have a few, a handful of school districts that are proposing a five-day traditional start, so.
Okay, but before I run out of time, I wanted to say. One more thing, but I really don't think that this was your choice, like if. Parents felt like going to a virtual school. There are charter schools that do know how to do the virtual model.
Yeah, and and you know, we we've been hired and tasked with making. Decisions for this school district and yes, we we recognize the responsibility and it's it's. Trust me when I say that it's it's not an easy decision that we come to this decision, all of us are trained as. Teachers and principals and educators and superintendents and we do our best work in. A traditional model and we're going to get there as soon as we safely can. And so this is very difficult, I realize it's a pandemic unlike anything that any of us have ever seen, this is my. Start of my twenty-seventh year in education, we've never experienced anything like this, but we're going to continue. To try to make the the best decisions for our entire community and I. I know that 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 is extremely difficult for some parents that really are are pressing and pushing for the five-day traditional. We just don't feel like we can do that safely at this time. Dr. O Black, did you want to re-explain how people can raise their hands in the. In the, on the the. The Zoom platform, because I I see some parents raising their hands, so they may have slight misunderstanding about. Raising your hands on the the format.
Yes, in your Zoom screen, there is an area named entitled Participants and you're able to click Raise Your Hand. And it will put a blue hand next to your name. Our next question is from screen name M B Benati. Our next question is from Kim Fleischer.
Yes, I had a question for when they go to a hybrid model. If your child, you know, they would happen to wake up in the morning and just have a regular cold or the flu. Or they might have someone in their house who's test positive and then, you know, a week later, someone else in their house could test positive. And they're facing a longer quarantine period. For those two days a week when they would normally be going to school, whether it's just one sick day or it's. Several weeks or a month of quarantine, would they have the option of doing online schooling for those days? Instead of just taking sick days?
Yeah, our our hope would be to have students engage in learning during that time and. That's one advantage to, you know, having been involved in this virtual platform is that we're learning. That that true learning can take place at home or it can take place in person. We recognize that with the the quarantining and and. The isolation time and the recovery time, you know, students could miss more days than they typically would miss, so. We want them to engage in learning when they can, if they can. We recognize that if students stick, they may not be able to engage in the learning activities, but at the same time. And we recognize that we don't want that instructional time to be lost. So our hope would be to be able to meet the needs of those students. That are in that virtual environment, whether they're quarantined or just in Titan Cyber. That they would be able to engage in in meaningful learning.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to check back to see if screen name M B Benati is there. I see that you unmuted yourself, are you able to ask your question? Okay, moving on, our next question is Kimberly Dixon.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I apologize, the previous meeting I had a technical issue. And I was late for the beginning of this meeting, so I apologize also if you already covered this. We've been talking a lot about the parent or the teacher to student relationship. What about the peer-to-peer relationship aspect of school? Given the current necessary social distancing and the masks and stuff like that. and the masks and stuff like that, it doesn't, I don't understand, I can't envision how either in the primary or the elementary, that that's going to give much to that aspect. Because you're not, they're busy. Like, the normal eight-year-old, nine-year-old, even six-year-old has to be moving. They have to do something. They have to have recess, they have to have gym for their sanity and that of the teacher. How is that going to be addressed, particularly as it's getting colder? It's not gonna be getting warmer.
Kim, so you're referring that when we move into the hybrid model?
Yes. And then there's also other things, like my son is signed up for, like, band. How is that gonna work? Because a large part of that learning is the community working together, things like that.
So, I think the first piece to addressing the interactions, we agree with you that the students need to engage with other students. And so, even in the virtual model, we want to try to create these classroom settings, opportunities for students to engage, because we realize that they learn together and collaborate well together. The piece about when they do come back together, and our phys ed teachers are gonna have to be very creative. They can still create some activities, because we think that physical activity is extremely important. We also, I've had conversations at the elementary and primary level about recess and the importance of movement and recess. So, our goal would be to continue on with those things. It may look a little bit different. We don't have every detail ironed out about what recess would look like. As far as band and music goes, we are also recognizing that there are specific recommendations that some of the governing bodies with music have rolled on. And so, we're actually working through those to ensure the safety of our students within areas like chorus and band and orchestra. So, I can assure you that all of those details are being considered. And we also recognize the importance of the student-to-student engagement in more of the, like, group settings.
Also, going back to the band and the choral thing, do you have any idea, because I'm not familiar with the current state or whatever the rulings and decisions on that is. My son's in fourth grade, so he would need to be bought, we need to find an instrument for him. And so, we don't want to wait until the last minute, oh, this is gonna be starting, and, oh, we have to go find an oboe, which is hard to find and an expensive item. But we also don't want to go buy one if he's not gonna even be able to use it this year. Next year, he could change his mind.
So, Kim, I'm gonna recommend that you contact your building principal, and they can put you in touch with the band teachers at the elementary school.
I guess what it would be, if there's a timeframe that you expect to have that information up and available.
And I think it's important. That's why I'm gonna refer you to contacting one of the principals for specific information around instrument rental and, you know, their recommendations. Because I think that, yes, I know that, I actually have a fourth grader who actually has a flute lesson today. That's her very first time playing an instrument. And so, yes, we went through, and they're actually starting in a remote setting as well. So, I think it's important that you speak with the principal, and they can connect you with one of the music teachers, and you can start the process of the rental agreement if you're going to, if your child's going to play an instrument.
Okay. It was just the timeframe, because those things are all about spit going every week. So, at this age. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is from Monica Anderson.
Hi, this is Monica. How do you plan on getting students acclimated to the layout of the school and finding their classrooms once we move to the hybrid learning plan, especially for those moving from third to fourth grade that have never been inside the school?
Monica, this question actually came up on Wednesday night, too. And we actually talked about, the first thing we've talked about is having a virtual video of the school. And I know the elementary school, that's not, that's not the same as actually going and walking through that, that school. So, we think that virtual video that could be on the district would be helpful. But we also recognize that as we transition back to a hybrid model, that it's going to be imperative that we get our students into the school to do a tour and see the space, because they missed out on that in the spring. These transition years, whether it's kindergarten, fourth grade, seventh grade, ninth grade, are really challenging. And so, we recognize, especially the school, the size of the elementary school, that students need to know where they're going to eat lunch, or go to the pool locker room, or go to the gymnasium, or, you know, wherever that they need, the auditorium, their classroom. So, we're gonna work on that and get you the opportunity to, get students the opportunity to get into schools before we transition into hybrids, so that they can have an understanding of where they're going.
Okay, thank you.
Our next question is from Janie Smith.
Yes, my question is in regards to the timeline for students getting schedules. Both of my children are doing the Virtual Cyber Academy.
Oh, that's pure idiot.
But again, I think a large part of his success is me getting them on a schedule to get their schoolwork done. So, my question again is just in regards to what timeline should we expect for those schedules to come in for the elementary school?
Yeah. You know, you're, you're gonna be, your child or children are going to be scheduled to their classroom teacher, just like they would any normal year. And they're going to be in the virtual setting for the first month, just like all the other students in the school district. And then, as we transition, when we transition into hybrid, if your choice at that time is to have your children continue, they would just continue on in that environment. We're still working out the details about exactly how that will look with the total virtual learning, where a student is in Titan Cyber Academy. But again, that, that won't look any different at the beginning of the school year. All of our students will be in that virtual setting at the beginning of the school year. And so, it will be the same timeframe for everybody else. Towards the end of this month, you'll receive, you know, contact about, you know, your teacher, and have an opportunity in early September to come in and meet the teacher or teachers and walk through that process just as you would in any other year.
All right. Thank you so much for your time and efforts with all of the work that's going into everything. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next question is from Michael Feck.
Hello. My question is, when will the determination be made to either extend 100% virtual learning or transition to the hybrid model? I'm just trying to get a feel for how much heads up will be given before we know whether the virtual will be extended or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. We will do our very best to give ample time. Our goal is to communicate on a weekly basis throughout this process, and to provide updates to parents about where we are as a school district, recognizing that some parents need childcare and have to make arrangements for children, you know, to go to relatives' homes, or somebody to come in your home, or to go into a childcare-type situation. So, our goal is to give you as much time as we possibly can to let you know when those transitions will happen or will not happen. Again, I don't have a definitive date by, you know, September 8th. We're gonna make a determination for October 9th. But our goal is to communicate and provide updates on a weekly basis.
Our next question is from Shawna. Our next question is from Amber W.
Use during virtual learning? Will we be using that to see who our child's classroom teachers are? And will grades be updated on Infinite Campus during that four weeks of virtual learning as well?
Dr. O'Black, do you want to take the Infinite Campus question?
We will continue to use Infinite Campus as we, as we previously have used. So, as we are going back to a traditional grading system, Infinite Campus would be used not only to obtain student schedules when they're made available, but also to check student progress.
Thank you.
Just to add to that question, you know, our goal, as stated earlier, is to provide feedback, assessments, both formative and summative assessments. And we want, you know, our teachers to challenge our students with tests and quizzes and meaningful work that really checks for understanding and evaluates their learning. So, we need to utilize the Infinite Campus to do so.
Thank you.
Our next question is from Danielle Minio.
Hi, I have a fourth grader coming in this year, and some of my questions were already answered by other parents already asking this. But regarding the attendance policy, is there any, because we're going, you know, virtual for the first month, and then we might try to go hybrid, you know, what's the attendance policy going to look like? I had previously asked this question, and it was saying it would come down from the state. The state would determine how an attendance policy would be structured according to various guidelines and so forth. But has the school district thought about what that would look like, what an attendance policy would look like for this year?
I'll take the first part of that, and then I'll allow Dr. O'Black to talk about that, too. There is more flexibility, and we do have the requirements with 180 school days and, you know, a certain number of hours that are expected of us at the state level. But there is going to be more flexibility with attendance this year, you know, given the circumstances that we're dealing with right now. Also, recognizing, you know, that if a student contracts the coronavirus, that may impact their ability to engage in learning as well, and could impact their attendance. Dr. O'Black, would you mind elaborating on that?
I think, Mr. Aiken, you really covered it. The state has not issued any specific guidance on attendance, you know. However, you know, as a school district, we certainly are, you know, astute to the fact that, you know, for obvious reasons, students may need to be absent for an extended, an extended period of time, specifically due to self-quarantining or, you know, mandated quarantining, you know, from the Allegheny County Department of Health. So, you know, one of our, you know, one of our requests is that, you know, parents obviously keep their school principal and teacher, you know, updated regarding that. And then, certainly, we will be continuing to look at our board-approved attendance policy for student attendance, to see if there are parameters that need to be, you know, officially suspended regarding that. But, you know, to echo Mr. Aiken, you know, flexibility is gonna be here, because ultimately, you know, as we've said, and we continue to say, you know, if children are sick, you know, we don't want them to be attending school. You know, we want them, you know, to be, to be self-screened, you know, at home. You know, we want parents to be consulting with a physician. And then, if the child is sick, that they, that they continue to be, to be at home.
Thank you. And these might be questions, I guess, for the building principal themselves, but in regards to, like, specials or swimming. I know some districts are canceling their specials. You don't foresee that happening at Shaler, do you?
No. They'll work out all the, they'll, they'll be able to discuss during that specific meeting or that, that building-specific meeting, they can talk more extensively about what specials will look like for the school year, at least the start of the school year. As for swimming, we still have to kind of talk through that and make a decision about what we're going to do. I know that in the hybrid model to start the year, we were not going to have swimming at the very beginning. But that may change later on, as we progress throughout the school year. Our expectation, again, whether it's art class or computer-type class, or any of the other specials, is that they are going to occur as normal as possible, obviously, given that we're in a, you know, a virtual model at the beginning of the school year. But there is going to be an expectation that there is a sense of normalcy.
All right. Thank you so much for your time.
Sure.
Our next question is from Shawna.
Hi, thank you. This is Shawna. I have two fourth graders entering the school this year, or going to school. So, I just have a, just a couple of quick things. One is a confirmation that the virtual learning is the same as the Cyber Academy, that they're not two separate things. That's my first question. The other question is around technology. You're talking a lot about iPads, and I know at some point, Chromebooks had been mentioned, and my kids do better on a larger screen. So, I wasn't sure if that was gonna be an option for any of the elementary students. And then, I know that if you sign up for virtual, for the first, they want, you know, you're required to be there for the first nine weeks, and then you can transition. But if you sign up for a hybrid after those first four weeks of 100% virtual, is it relatively easy to decide to stay virtual if, at the end of the four weeks, you're like, I'm not sending my kids?
Yeah. We want there to be some flexibility around that, Shawna. And we recognize that there, a parent could change their mind midstream, and we want to be flexible. So, the remote, or, excuse me, the virtual learning platform is the same as our Titan Cyber Academy, and we were working through the details of that and what that would look like. So, it's important to note right now, you know, we are creating this and these options for our students so that they can seamlessly transition from one to the other. And if a parent decides to keep their child for the nine-week period in a, in a virtual learning, and then wants to transition back to the hybrid or the traditional, that they can do so relatively easily. As far as the platform, our goal right now is to create a one-to-one platform with the iPads. We do have some Chromebooks in the district, but our goal right now is to be consistent with, with the iPad one-to-one initiative.
That's helpful. Thanks. And thanks for everything you're doing. I couldn't imagine being in your position right now.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Our next comment is from the screen name SSZA FRA NSKI.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Well, my biggest concern off the beginning is the lack of keeping my children's attention. I have a son going into sixth grade and a son going into seventh grade. From March 15th to the end of the school year, let's face the fact, or what happened was an absolute disaster, and inability to keep my kids attendant, attention spanned at all, let alone any kind of education. It was a complete disaster. The teachers repeatedly told my children, oh, great job, even though this isn't getting graded, in emails and everything else. The kids thought it was a joke. So, your first, your first hurdle is gonna be getting these kids readapted to the reality that this is how our education's gonna be, at least for this first four weeks, because I'm gonna tell you straight up, I saw my kids up for hybrid. With that said, I would like to see more transparency from our school district. I was not even aware that there was a meeting that was taking place on Wednesday. I would like to see the numbers. How many parents signed their children up for hybrid? How many decided to keep their children? How many decided to keep their children out on this virtual model? So are 50% of the kids coming back to school that you just decided here that all of a sudden we're not going to have in-face or in-person schooling? That we're not even going to attempt to do the hybrid model? What's the number? If you've got 50% of these 4,200 kids at home and you're only bringing 50% of them to the classroom, then why can't we continue to have the hybrid model? With social distancing and everything else occurring? You're making these decisions without giving us the information on what you're basing these decisions on. And I think that's what Mr. Fine was trying to ask you earlier, without actually expressing that factor. Then, with that said, you postponed school another two weeks. And now it's six months since my children will be in school before we even start school again. And you say it's for the teachers to get acclimated? You've had five months to get these teachers prepared for this model. You can't tell me back in, by middle of April, you had no inclination that this might be how the continuance of our education was going to be this fall? And you didn't gear up and get prepared to do some kind of virtual schooling? I, I, I don't understand what is going on in our school district and the lack of transparency with you all is, is really starting to annoy me. And I don't understand, you talk about the Titan of Cyber Academy. Why shouldn't I just put my kid in, in P A Cyber, who's been doing this for years? So can you answer my question? Are we going to have some more transparency? And can you provide us with the numbers of what's actually going on with the decisions of these other parents in our district?
Let me, I'll, I'll start back from the beginning of your concern, sir. The first, the first concern you brought up is the engagement with your children. And I, I realize that, that March, April and May wasn't ideal. You know, I, I think our teachers did, you know, the best that they could do, given the current situation. And I, I've heard many stories from many parents just stating just the opposite, how their teachers went above and beyond. I, I don't, I don't know exactly why that experience wasn't the same for your children, but I apologize.
There was no face-to-face interaction.
Well, and, and that's, and, and earlier in this presentation, we talked about the synchronous and asynchronous. And we talked about the opportunity for our students to engage in the Zoom, the Google Meet, and the opportunities for our students to engage in a classroom-type environment, to have more structure, to have more assessment and, you know, grades. I, I think, you know, just now having those pieces together will change the nature of the learning for students. And we want consistency. We want normalcy. Just, just like you said, we, we want to create the, the best environment for our students, given the current situation. So you're going to see a marked difference with the, the virtual learning. I think that you're going to see more engagement and, you know, more real-time instruction. And, and, you know, again, I, I know this is a work in progress and, and I realize that parents have decisions to make and they have options. So we want to be relevant. We want to be effective in how we do this. As far as the transparency, I, I could tell you, you know, from, from my perspective, and it may not be the same perspective that you have, that, that we've tried to be as transparent as possible. But I, I want to assure you that we can't make the decision based on just if, if 51% or 60% of parents want in-person instruction or a hybrid model or a traditional model. We have to base the decision on the 4,200 students in the school district and the 500 staff members and what's the safest alternative and option for our students.
That is not all the point I'm trying to make. The point I was trying to make-
I'm actually going to get to that, sir. If, just give me a moment, please. So when, when we sent out the commitment survey a few weeks ago, probably about 75% of our, our staff, or excuse me, our families indicated that they would prefer the hybrid model. But those numbers continue to be updated because the, the date isn't up until this Thursday. So once again, even if we have 75%, at the end of Thursday, if we have 75% of our families that, that prefer some type of hybrid instruction, that doesn't necessarily mean that we would change our decision to do that instead of the virtual, because we still think that there is a concern with bringing the number of students back in. So even if it's 2,000 students or 2,500 students or however many, we still think that that challenge of bringing in that number of students to our district, given the, the parameters from the CDC, the Pennsylvania Department of Education, the Department of Health and the Allegheny County Health Department on school buses, hallways, you know, classrooms, locker rooms, wherever, that does not give us the confidence that we can adequately hold school in that environment. So our goal is, is to continue to prepare our schools, be ready for the hybrid option in the four weeks and provide some consistent, good instruction at the beginning of this school year, so no time is lost.
But you already delayed school two weeks. And with the statement you just made, we can pretty already much make the assumption that this hybrid model is not going to take place in four weeks. And why don't you just tell us that straight up right now? Because the, what you're saying with the data that you have, you don't feel confident in the fact that you can provide our children the safety in the school district, even with only 50% of the children or 75% of the children? So why don't you just tell us that the hybrid's not even going to be a, a realistic goal that you can feel confident that you can achieve? And why not just prepare us for the fact that this is just going to be virtual learning this year?
Well, and, and that's, that's not, I, I can't promise you that hybrid is going to be ready on October 9th and that we'll be transitioning at that time, but that's our hope and that's our goal.
And what, what's it going to take to make you feel confident to put our children back in the building?
Well, I, once again, there's, there's measurements from the Allegheny County. Right now, we do not have a matrix, but I will say that there was talk on Thursday from the Allegheny County Health Department. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to cut you off after this question, just to make sure that we give ample time to other people that have questions. But I will, the department is talking about putting out some type of matrix that would help us make these decisions. I'm not trying to blame anybody. I'm just simply stating the facts. We have, we've used data from the county and we've also been in, in communication at the state level, the local level, and that's why we arrived at this decision. In a matter of two months, when October 9th hits, if we're in a better place and we feel like we can do that, then we're going to move to the hybrid model. I can't assure you 100% that that's going to happen, but that's our goal and that's our hope. But we're going to do so when we safely can.
Well, alls we can do is hope and pray. Have a great day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Our next question is from Amy Henson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I just have one quick question. Last year, my daughter was in the third grade and she also does have an IEP, which she is a little slow in reading. But we had to log on to five to six different websites for her education, the three months that they were off. I'm just wondering, now that she's going to the fourth grade, is it going to be one system that they log on to? Or is there going to be a lot of different, you know, we had so many different ones for the third grade and it was so confusing.
Yeah. Our, our goal is to streamline that process. As, as mentioned earlier, with Google Classroom, we want K to 12 have a, a singular platform, learning management platform for our, our teachers and our students and our families. Yes, there, it was, it was difficult. The spring was difficult. And I, you know, some of those considerations were challenging for our families to, to deal with. But again, you know, we've learned some things along the way and, and we are going to be more focused on streamlining the process. And like I mentioned earlier too, we also want to educate our families. And so some of the tech trainings with our, our staff and for students would be very helpful for our students and parents to attend because we recognize that, that, you know, there's a lot of questions around this and, and we're, we're doing something new. And this is not, you know, wasn't our expertise and it's probably still not our expertise, but we're going to continue to get better at it.
Absolutely. I agree. I mean, I'm not complaining. I think you guys are, you know, we're all in this to try to figure out a better way to keep everyone safe. I work in a hospital. I try to keep my family safe. I distance myself from my family. I'm trying to do everything, trying to follow all the guidelines. I just want to make sure that they are safe and I really recommend you guys are, are doing a fabulous job of what you guys are trying to do. I know we're, like I said, it's a new thing. We're all learning. I just wanted to make sure like we could all log on to like one program or two, because six to seven for a third grader was a lot.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you very much.
Our next question is from Jennifer Atkin.
Jennifer, we can't hear you because you're muted.
Okay. We're new to the Shaler area this year and my son is going to be going into the fifth grade. Is playing an instrument required?
It is not required.
Okay, thank you. And I think you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Our next question is from Kayla.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Okay.
Um, I was just wondering, I have just a couple of questions. Is there going to be any extra help, like tutoring if needed? And if an IEP, is there going to be testing for IEPs?
Yeah, and we're required by law to test. If, if there was a, a reason that, that we would believe, you know, that, you know, some type of evaluation would need to occur, we would be required to do so. So our, our school psychologists and our director of people services will be communicating, you know, any information that, that parents or teachers may need according to that. In the virtual environment, it's a little bit different, but we've been preparing for that just in case of this situation. So the other thing too, that you mentioned is around tutoring and, and help, right? I, I think it's important that we do provide some resources. So I think that I would communicate with teachers whenever you do feel like you need help, that there's maybe some gaps in learning. But we also want to be careful too, not to overwhelm our students as we transition into this virtual platform. It, it's important that, that we focus on the social and emotional piece as well as the academic piece. And we don't want to, you know, throw in that whole remediation piece too and really overwhelm our, our families and our students. So we want to try to find the right balance. But I would just express the needs when you see a need with the teachers or the principal or the counselor and say, you know, you know, just, you know, share, you know, where some of the deficits may be and where some of your concerns are.
Okay. And I just have one more question. I know we're all going to the iPads, but for families like myself who got a Chromebook at the end of last year, do you know when we'll get information about turning those in or anything?
Yeah. Dr. O'Black, do you want to address that tech question?
Yes, we'll be communicating with parents who receive the district-owned device. When you pick up your iPad, we'll be asking you to exchange your Chromebook. So you would bring it to the, the orientation pickup event that we'll be having.
Okay, great. You, great. And I just want to say thank you for keeping, you know, the safety of our children in the forefront, so.
Thanks, Kayla.
Our next question is from Bethany.
Hi, I was just wondering, my family is a blended family composition. And so when we return to the hybrid model, my kids, two of the, there's two in one alphabet category and one in another alphabet category. Is there going to be an opportunity to have some flexibility to try to get them on the same schedule? Being that their names are different?
Absolutely, Bethany. And we'll work with our principals. And in fact, when we've been getting requests like that, we've been forwarding them to our principal because we know, we understand that there are blended families throughout the district and we need to be aware. We, we want it to make sense for families too and, and be as flexible as possible when considering those types of requests.
Thank you very much. And I, I work in a, a child-serving system. I really appreciate the fluidity of this and know you guys are doing the best job. So thank you for everything.
Thanks, Bethany.
Our next question is from Melissa V.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, everyone. My name is Melissa Venenciano and I have two questions. One, my son, he's entering sixth grade and one of his concerns was that he is really interested in being tested for the accelerated math. And he feels that not being in the school setting, he is not able to. So I was wondering if that's still an opportunity? And also, is there availability for every class to be live? Like whether you do that online or hybrid, if the teacher's available live for them through their iPads, they have a better opportunity to have interaction with the teacher, with each other. You could record that. That way it's replayable and everyone's on the same learning path, just as if they were in a real classroom.
So Melissa, to your, your first question about accelerated math, I'm sure that will be a, a topic of conversation in our building-specific meetings. And so when our principals, I know our principals are on the call today, when our principals, you know, prepare for that meeting, there may be some sixth-grade parents, fifth and sixth-grade parents that ask questions around accelerated math. And I'm sure that, that we're still going to have students that will be, you know, assessed for that and move in that direction if, if they, you know, have that unique ability. And I would just say that, that we will, you know, make sure that that's part of the discussion when those building-specific meetings take place. And the second piece that you mentioned is we think it's also important to have synchronous and asynchronous instruction. And so our goal is to make sure that we have some live instruction with our families and our students. So it's going to be important, you know, that, that they engage in that type of learning in classroom environments and we'll be moving in that direction here in this virtual environment.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all of your hard work.
Thank you.
Our next question is from Nick V.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Hello. My question's pretty simple. You know, some of the folks have mentioned earlier, some of the surrounding school districts have given the parents the opportunity to make a decision. You know, if they sign a form saying that they want their child to go back and they accept full responsibility, they should be allowed to do that. And then if folks want to keep their kids at home, they should be allowed to do that as well. Is there going to be some point, is there like a date and time that's out there that you folks have picked, that you've decided that the parents can, at that point, decide they want to send their kid five days a week, traditional school?
Yeah. As I mentioned, Nick, earlier in the meeting, I, I think it's important to move from the most restrictive environment to the least restrictive environment. So our, our goal and desire absolutely is to move towards a traditional environment. All of us, that's, that's our training. That's our area of, of specialty and expertise. That's our experience. And so yes, our, our hope is to go from virtual to hybrid to traditional when, when we safely can do so. As far as signing a waiver to basically say that you don't hold the district responsible for anything that occurs, I, I've not heard of districts actually doing like a liability clause like that, like an AAU basketball tournament or something like that. But I, I don't think that that will happen in our district and I'm not sure if it has happened. But I do know that there are a few districts out there in Allegheny County that have a five-day, a hybrid and a virtual option available. We just don't feel right now that we can safely do that. And, but I, I want to say though, that our goal would be to move in that direction at some point this school year. at some point this school year. Um, so again, you know, that's, that's our desire. Uh, we know that many parents share that same desire for their children. And we know that students in many cases want that, but we've got to measure out uh, you know, the entire population of students and staff that we have. And, and we'll get there at some point, but we want to get there when we can safely do so.
I, I'm just not understanding because this time of year right now, you have temperatures that are anywhere from eighty to a hundred degrees. The virus, if, is, viruses are out there all over the place in the world. You know, there's, there's no cure for any, anything like that. There's no cure for the flu. There's no cure for anything. So the only thing that's going to happen is we get into September, October, November, you're going to start getting some of these viruses coming back, be it the flu, be it this one, uh, COVID nineteen, be it stomach virus. I mean, at what point do you see that we can go back traditional if we're looking at every little, you know, every little thing like that? I feel that, you know, these kids' immune systems are strong enough. But like I said, if certain parents don't, don't want that, that, that's, I respect that as well. You know, it should, but it should be our decision at some point is all I'm getting at. I'm, I understand you guys are doing a great job and this is the first time for you guys dealing with this as well. But I'm just looking at, you know, it's only going to get worse come the winter months. So at what point do we decide, hey, you know, we can go back? Or is this going to continue for the rest of our lives? Because if that's the case, I'm going to look for a district that doesn't do that. Because I want my kids to go to school. I want them to interact. I had my kids in sports all summer and they're just fine. You know, I've been interacting with other parents. Everybody's fine. So that's my only thing I'm getting at.
Yeah. And I, I think Nick, uh, it's a good point. And I think a lot of us thought that this summer with the heat, especially the heat that we've had this summer and the dry summer that we've had, that we thought that everything would change. Uh, but it hasn't. So I, I do think there probably is going to be an adjustment period. Uh, and I don't know.
Is this off of the testing, like the, like the higher amount, numbers of, of confirmed cases in PA? Is that what you're basing this off of?
Well, it's also Allegheny County, specific to Allegheny County in this area. And we saw a sharp increase in, in uh, the month of July. Uh, we've also, uh, you know, been working closely with the Allegheny County Health Department. Uh, and, and I mean, you could see districts across the country and districts across the, the state are in the same places as us. And I realize there are other districts that are doing hybrid and some districts that are trying to do um, in person, like five day traditional. But I, I, you know, for us right now, I think this is the safest option that we have. In the, in the future, I hope that we can transition quickly back to a hybrid and then into the uh, the traditional. I think our desire is the same as yours. Uh, we just want to make sure that we can do so safely.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Our next uh, question comes from ET iPhone Home.
All right, sorry about that. Uh, I just installed Zoom and that's my phone's name and that's what my name came out in the chat. So uh, my question is about the curriculum um, and how it might be changing because like a lot of people in the school district, I think. Uh, me and my wife both work and my son has ADD diagnosed. So figure the last, you know, ever since COVID started, he learned nothing. Because, you know, me and my wife tried to fit in some education at the end of our both full-time workdays. Obviously, everybody wants to see their kids succeed, so we put as much energy into that as we can. But the reality is we're, our brains are fried from work and he can't concentrate. He has ADD. So you just got to assume, not only did he not learn anything the last three months or whatever it was with COVID, he's actually regressed. So what my wife and I are concerned about now is uh, he graduated from third grade to fourth grade, but he really didn't even finish third grade. So how is the curriculum going to adapt to people in our situation? Or do you have any recommendations? Uh, and that's, that's the question.
Yeah. And I, I think it's a good question. Uh, and, and we recognize that there are going to be gaps all over the place. And students with, with special needs or, or identified health challenges or, you know, some of the other things uh, that we face, you know, as parents and, and teachers and, you know, our students, I, I think it's going to be important that we kind of evaluate where our students are at. Uh, you know, I, I think just picking up normally, like as if everything was normal last year is not the right thing to do. But I also think bombarding our kids with extra work and remediation and bogging them down with, you know, kind of trying to fill those gaps is not the right answer either. So I think it's, it's going to be important that we, you know, rely on the expertise of our teachers and really identify ways to, to fill those gaps in a creative way. Uh, but just more is not going to help. And, and I think it's going to create some resistance potentially with your son and other students.
Mm-huh.
So I, I think that, you know, getting our teachers to engage with our students, assess where they are, understanding that, that there are going to be gaps. It's not just going to be your son. There's going to be gaps all over the place. Uh, but you know, I think it's our teachers and their level of engagement and expertise that's going to help bring out uh, some of those, those areas that, that need to be remediated in doing a way that's not overwhelming. Again, there, there's no simple, easy answer to this. And it's not a, a prescription or a formula. But I would say that it, it is kind of what our teachers do best. And I, I would suspect that they're going to find ways to, to, you know, kind of um, scaffold some of the instruction and bring some different things in from previous grade levels to make sure that, that that um, material that, that was maybe not learned uh, is, is remediated in a way that's not overwhelming.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Our next question is from Lisa Pierce.
Good afternoon. Thanks for taking my question. I'd actually like to preface it with, um, I'm going to be responsible for the educational oversight of five children in the district across three school buildings. And I'm very much invested in their education, so much so that our family has opted for me to take a leave from my job to ensure that these kids are cared for. Um, so there's a lot riding on the decisions that you make. Um, and forgive me if I'm being redundant, but I still don't feel that I've heard an answer to the question that I asked last week. It's been asked earlier in Zooms today. What are the specific and measurable milestones as a district we are looking to reach to say that it's safe for our kids to return to the building?
Uh, Lisa, uh, I, I think that number one, you know, thank you for entrusting the responsibility of your children to us. And, and also I, I realize that this is, you know, a, a challenge and, and a sacrifice that many of our parents are having to make during this time. Uh, and we don't take any of this lightly. Uh, in fact, you know, we wrestle with these decisions over and over and over. Um, so I, I want to go back to the question that you asked though about the metrics. And, and I would love to say that there's a matrix that the county, and, and as I mentioned, right now, there is not a matrix. So we have to take the information that we have uh, from the county and make the best decision that we can, given that we have four thousand two hundred students and close to five hundred staff members. Again, uh, the cases right now in Allegheny County have come down in the past couple of weeks. But if you saw the spike in the middle of July and then uh, the continued increase, uh, and then maybe a slight decrease over the last couple of weeks, it's concerning to us. Uh, and, and also the age range of some of the, the people that are getting, you know, uh, the coronavirus. So, and so we take all these things into consideration. And we also take into consideration what the expectations are from the Allegheny County Health Department, the Pennsylvania Department of Education, the CDC, and also the Pennsylvania Department of Health. And so we factor all those things in together. Now, I would love to say that, that hopefully in the coming weeks that Pennsylvania comes up with uh, some type of matrix that we could use or metric that we can use. And then to say we go from, you know, from, you know, red to yellow to green. And when we do so, we move into a hybrid situation or a.
Well, all these things you're talking about are not within the school district's control.
Right.
Those are numbers outside of, but, but you're saying that as a school district, we don't feel it's safe because we can't meet guidelines. So is there anything being done within the school district that are, is measurable and specific? I, I, there's numbers right now I'm looking at, there's eleven hospitalizations under the age of nineteen in Allegheny County. There's zero deaths under the age of nineteen in Allegheny County. It's on the Allegheny County website. I guess I don't understand what numbers you're looking to find that. I guess, are you asking that you want the, the state to mandate when we can return? Is that what you're saying?
Not at all. And, and in fact, in, in Governor Wolf has pretty much made it clear that he is not going to make that ruling. Uh, but overall, you know, we have to make the decision that really is in the best interest of our students and, and our community. And so we recognize that um, the numbers per se in Allegheny County for this age group may not be high, but they also have not been in a school setting during that time. Uh, yes, there's kids that have played basketball. They've played baseball. They've done that. But it's different putting fourteen hundred students in a high school or.
But I don't think anybody's asking you to do that. If you're going with the hybrid, you're, you're looking at under forty percent of the kids in the building on a given day. Nobody's asking you to put everybody in together.
Even if we put uh, four hundred and fifty students in the building on a given day, that's different than anything else that's out there. And, and I, I don't think that we can safely do that at this time. And, and that's the decision and the recommendation that we made for our school board is based on that, those concerns, we can't do that. Now, I, I would hope that in the, the first four weeks that we can safely move to hybrid. Again, uh, I hope that there's metrics in place that will assist our decision-making on this, understanding that uh, you know, we may or may not get that. We've got to make a local decision. There are other districts that have made slightly different decisions than us, but there are other districts that have made the exact same decision as us. And so we've got to, you know, kind of navigate these numbers and understand uh, what's the right thing to do uh, in order to keep our students safe and healthy and our staff safe and healthy.
Right. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Our next question is from Jen Bray.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Jen.
Okay. Um, my first question, because I missed the beginning of the presentation. Will classes be pre-recorded? Or are they going to be given a bunch of stuff like they were before, where they had to go search for answers, search for lessons? Um, will they actually have a teacher teaching them rather than them teaching themselves?
Yeah, Jen, uh, earlier in the presentation, um, we spent a, a lot of time talking about that engagement piece and synchronous and asynchronous instruction, Google meets and Zoom classrooms, uh, having as much normalcy as possible. Uh, obviously in the spring, we were kind of thrust into a situation. Uh, but there is going to be live learning. There's going to be live instruction.
Okay, but that's not my question. My question is will the classes be pre-recorded? My husband and I both work. So I can't get both of my children on necessarily during school hours, especially because I have one under an extensive IEP.
Jen, you cut me off right before I was getting ready to say it. So we're going to have live instruction. We're going to have live teaching and student engagement. And we're also going to have recorded lessons. Because we recognize that some families are in different situations and some families work and uh, during the day and their students may not be able to engage in those live classroom settings. Uh, so there's going to be a need to be, you know, have the, the lessons recorded and uh, students will be able to access that material at any time. Uh, families would be able to do so. And yes, we recognize the need to be flexible in that.
My second question, how, and I've reached out to Dr. Grasek on this as well and have not gotten a response. So I'm very, not very pleased at all with that. How do you actually plan to provide IEP services for the children who need them? Um, in the spring, I was just sent a bunch of stuff and I was expected to be the speech therapist. I was expected to be the occupational therapist. Um, my son is going into sixth grade and reads on a kindergarten level. I don't have access to the reading program that he has, nor can I purchase it because I'm not a teacher. So I'd like to know how you guys actually plan to have these services provided when the students aren't in front of their uh, therapists and their teachers?
Yeah, so uh.
Or with aid, not getting his aid either, which is another big issue.
So earlier in the presentation, we talked a lot about the, uh, the need to meet the needs of our students with IEPs. And we recognize that it's not, it can't just solely be the uh, special education teacher. It also needs to be the regular education teacher. It needs to be the paraprofessional. Uh, there needs to be related services that are offered, uh, whether it's through the AIU or one of our own staff members, if it was like a speech and language need. Uh, so we recognize that the uh, remote setting or the, the virtual setting is, is not the most ideal setting for accommodations and modifications for students with IEPs. But we're going to do everything that we possibly can do uh, to meet those needs. Uh, so small group instruction, uh, the resources that, that you've mentioned uh, are, are, are going to be accessible and available to our students. Uh, we also will, you know, do everything to uh, you know, make sure that there's uh, the paraprofessional or the aide that's working with the student. Uh, so we recognize that this is a complex situation uh, for students that, that have significant learning difficulties. And we're going to do everything that we can to do that, recognizing that it's challenging, but at the same time, it's necessary. And so I, I, I know that it's going to be a work in progress. Um, but I can tell you that, that Dr. Grasek and our team of special education teachers and uh, our support staff uh, and other support staff around uh, the region is going to team up to uh, meet the needs of our students.
I, I still didn't get an answer out of that. Um, and I don't really, I'm with Lisa and Nate and Nick in disagreeing that this is the way it needs to go when only point four percent of the entire population of the Shaler Area School District has been infected in five months. That stripping, uh, especially for my son, he's falling through the cracks and it's just going to continue under this ridiculous work from home plan that we all know isn't going to go back to the classroom after four weeks, if at all during the school year. I feel like maybe you should give us a little bit more of an idea so that some of us can get our kids into schools that are actually hosting children in them. I think it's very unfair for us to be sitting in a situation here where we're not getting really any information. It's just talking in circles over and over again. I mean, I want to know how is my kid going to be getting the instruction when he needs a physical human being in front of him and not a laptop or an iPad? He can't read. He needs somebody to sit there and help him read the stuff. And if somebody's sitting in another house and he's on a tablet, how is that helping?
I actually can step in and answer. This is Dr. Grasek. And Ms. Bray, I apologize. I just took a quick look through my email and didn't see anything from you. So my, my suggestion for your specific questions is that um, I can give you a call after this meeting and we can talk through them. Um, but like Mr. Aiken and Dr. Black have said, moving forward, the spring setup was not ideal for instruction for any student, let alone students with complex needs and requiring specially designed instruction. So what we're doing moving forward is we're creating a more hands-on instructive type class that replicate, replicates the services that they were receiving while they were in the regular, regular school setting. Um, but I would be happy to call you after this meeting to talk to you about it in more detail.
Yes, I'm going to need a phone call because I'm not at all satisfied that, that it's actually going to come to fruition.
Okay, so I can look you up in our system and I can give you a call. Is there a good time this afternoon?
At any point.
Okay, I will give you a call.
Thank you.
Our final question for today is from Linda. Linda, are you still with us? Are you able to hear us, Linda? Mr. Aiken, those would be all the questions that we have. It doesn't appear as if Linda's able to talk with us.
All right. I just want to take a moment to thank you. Uh, thanks for joining us today. Uh, we understand that this, this is a very difficult situation that we're working through and we're going to continue to do our very best to partner with you uh, to answer questions, to work with your. to answer questions, to work with your children and see our students get back into a virtual setting to start the year and then hopefully move into that hybrid and then traditional. So again, I just want to take the opportunity to thank you. Hope to see you in the next Zoom call with the building-specific principals and questions that you may have. And then we'll go from there and do the orientations and the other trainings that are going to occur right before the beginning of the school year. Thank you very much, have a great day.